The reason we did the workshop was based off of what was petitioned so we could figure out what are we going to present to landowners at the, at a following date, following meeting. And so, what was requested here needs to be in a simple enough format going back to say this is what it is. If everyone understands, great. If everyone doesn't, I mean, then we did our best, whatever. But it's, I guess, what are, what is the board gonna present back? I think is the intent of this workshop.
Yeah.
Am I wrong?
You are correct.
Okay.
And that's why I was documenting all those years because I know sixteen they were whole. Twenty fours, well, I didn't understand twenty three or twenty four, but twenty three was explained, but twenty four hasn't been. So I don't know how I can get it clear in my head enough to say, here, this is what happened, you know? And I think we all need to be on the same page, whether or not we understand it fully or not. We still need to be on the same page with that. And I can't, I, I can't listen to any more explanations that are circling around and circling around and without an answer. Because with seven hundred thousand dollars, there's gotta be a way to explain seven hundred thousand dollars. There's gotta be a way.
It, it's all the parts that equal the whole, but I don't, I don't know a different way to explain the same information.
Maybe we need to list the parts. Can we list the parts?
That's what we need to list. How did, I mean, we had to have, I mean, I shouldn't say we, you guys, when you assessed this, had to have known why you were assessing this. Tammy's office assessed it, I mean, you know? So there had to be something in place to say, here, this needs to be assessed. Where, where is it? The big piece of the puzzle.
I understand the thought process. I understand why, why that number was the way it was in surface, but I don't understand.
What makes it up?
All of what makes up those particular numbers.
Right. And that, that's what I'm after too. I just wanna know what makes up that number. If that's seventy thousand, well, almost seventy thousand is part of it, okay, great, you know? Take that off of there. Now we gotta figure out six hundred some thousand. If there, it looks like two thousand eighteen, our assessment was short, like fourteen and some thousand dollars. We don't have that interest figured yet, but maybe it's similar and it's like seventy thousand. Okay, so that's eighty five thousand, so it's a hundred some thousand. What's the rest?
So the petition itself, what the landowners are requesting, they want an accounting of district work done from January first, twenty nineteen to the present. This must include the following, District Four FEMA main open ditch repairs, all repair work receiving FEMA dollars and projections of cost. Landowners have been told they're responsible for fifteen percent. That's all just documentation. I mean, that's, yeah. And then thus far, landowners have been billed. Uh, landowners request an accounting of where all FEMA dollars have been used as it pertains to Cassouth County drainage projects. So that would be a simple enough document then too.
Well, for all projects, all FEMA projects for lifetime?
Oh, well, this is pertains to Cassouth County. This is not just Drainage District Four.
Uh, we gotta focus on four right now.
Right.
Yeah, because that's, that's a huge question.
Obviously, we have other work to do elsewhere, but four is what we're gonna focus on now.
Let's concentrate on four for this particular discussion, but.
We're just gonna confuse ourselves and jump around.
Yeah, but I'm saying even FEMA dollars used for Drainage District Four, that would all be in a spot to provide, right?
Well, we're working on it.
We're working on it anyway, okay? And then, then requesting a name of an individual. I mean, what, as far as the details of the seven hundred thousand, I think that's something as a board that'd be good for us to know. That's not specifically in the petition, um, but.
No, but it's part of.
But it's part of the process, so.
The process of what they're having to pay. So, I mean, we need to know what that is so we can connect the dots for the money.
Right. We go off, because we need to know what we're assessing too.
Because if they were whole in two thousand sixteen, that FEMA money, you know, okay, even if it went towards something else, it's still, by the looks of it, outside of the interest, they were pretty darn close then to being whole, except for the money they didn't know about which was the interest. That's what it looks like to me. So.
As I have no, as far as the workshop goes, I, I don't have anything more to add to the discussion personally.
No, we didn't accomplish it.
Right, but I guess what?
You guys were here.
I, I'm.
You guys should have the most to say.
Yeah.
I said the most, I wasn't even here, just by the stuff I gathered myself trying to put it together. And you guys were here and can explain it. I mean, I'm not trying to be difficult, but I mean, let's kind of be real for a little bit. I get things were done wrong. Hey, everybody's human. If we, if things were done wrong, we should, and we know it, and that's why you assess seven hundred thousand dollars, let's show what the, the wrongdoing was or the errors were to make that up. That's all I'm asking for. We didn't pull that number out of the blue sky. If we did, we have really bad bookkeeping.
Kyle, you requested the workshop. Here, is there anything more you wanted to add, share?
I, I don't know any different ways to explain it. I'm, I really don't. I've gone over it hundreds of times.
I don't, how do you say that you've gone over it if we don't have an answer? Going over it is an explanation and it gives an answer. I mean, I know there was a spreadsheet that was used to come up with this number, but nobody's mentioning it. I don't care who did it. If we used it for an assessment, we should at least be able to have a copy of it or at least a copy of it in the auditor's office. So if somebody's questioned, hey, what did this make up? You know, what it, they should say, oh, yeah, okay, we have a spreadsheet that can explain all of that. Here you go. I don't care who did it. I mean, I know people have asked who, who did it. I don't really care who did it. I just wanna know what's on it so it explains this.
Uh, the numbers I have on that don't match what Tammy came up with for the extra interest expense, but that's where, depends on if you calculate it to the day of the assessment or when the warrants were actually redeemed. It changes the equation. Your formula's different. So, depends on how you look at it, but if you boil it down to the mechanics of what actually happened, the warrants accrued interest till the dollars were available to call them in. So, the only way to represent that, that I'm aware of, is to compare from the day they were issued and figure out their total costs to the day they were called in. And.
But you did, isn't it, Tammy? Isn't that what it was?
Till the day they were redeemed?
Yeah, that was what you just showed me on your spreadsheet.
I thought that's what I did.
That's.
So Kyle, are you saying that that seven hundred thousand dollars is all interest?
No.
Okay. How much of that is interest?
I don't have an exact figure for each piece of the equation in front of me right now.
Okay.
Well, that, I mean, would've been helpful today for our workshop. Because like, you know, I guess for me to, what I was gonna try and attempt to put together, I can't do that unless I have that. You know, I mean, I'm completely used for me to, I don't even know what I was gonna put together is gonna make sense to anybody but myself. But I was at least gonna try. How long did it take you to do phase one? Long time?
Um, eight hours maybe. And I have started on phase two. I just haven't finished it yet.
Yeah, okay. Yep. I don't know how long we're gonna sit in silence, but I mean, what, I mean, where, where do we go from here though?
We have to go somewhere because we can't give this to the Canadian donors. It's not any further than where we're going.
Yeah, well, exactly.
So.
I mean, I, I'm, I'm just ripping myself. I'm just ripping myself, yeah.
Kyle, do you think there's anything that might be in the, that Marge might have kept anything from that that I can look in the files?
I don't know. I don't know if she would've had anything or not.
Well, it sounds like the seven hundred thousand dollars, the dollar amount did come from Marge. Past, present, future doesn't matter. We're all supposed to be in this together. Anything that any one of us does affects the others. You know, I know Howard, he's blessed with not a lot of drainage and so is Josh, but decisions we make outside, it still affects them. It still affects them because we are one board. We have to.
But the people in their districts are the only ones voting for us.
Well, I understand that, but yet we're still responsible for everyone. I talk to people who aren't in my district. I know Howard Stomani, he's talked to some people who are in my district, but they might, they're like Howard, so they call him. That's okay. People call me. I don't care. We're all, we still represent Cassouth County. We don't represent only our district. We are representing everyone. And we should be able to fend for one another when a decision is made. All decisions that are made should have an explanation. It shouldn't just be, well, this is what I came up with. Okay, that's fine. And thank you for coming up with it, but show me, show me your work. It's okay. We all gotta work together. If we can't do that, it's, it makes me kind of sad because, like I said, we're in it together. I might, like, when we do the budget. No, do we, do each and every one of us love everything in the budget? Nope. But we worked for months on it, worked for months on it to come up with this budget. So whether we agree with one part or none of it, we at least worked together to come to that point. We gotta work together to get this done. And we can't unless we have an answer to two thousand twenty four. And at that, I encourage you to decide where we're going from here, because you are the chairman. Because I'm not gonna sit here and do another workshop and just do the same thing. I wanted to leave here today having all these answers at least somewhat so that I could make it clear in my own head. So therefore, I felt like then I can explain it or we all can explain it to someone else. Which is what we are expected to do. And we're gonna sit here and not talk. What are we gonna do when we have the public hearing to explain it? Sit here and not talk?
I already did that a couple times.
What do you mean?
Already explained it a couple times in public hearings.
What were the dates of them so we can go back and, and watch the video then?
I don't know if I've memorized.
I have to look at the agendas. I, I wanna say one was in August last year.
Well, I have watched August sixth and I was not very clear even after that.
Well, so you, you've seen that one. As far as before that, I can't remember. Well, I, yeah, I mean, I was hoping that we'd all have kind of a common stream of thought here, but I, yeah, I don't know what the purpose of scheduling another workshop until we have some sort of information beforehand to, to do a workshop on. As far as what to do next, uh.
Thing is, we shouldn't need all these workshops to give an answer to this. I get it's confusing. I get we got a lot of information, but we shouldn't need a bunch of workshops to explain it. Here's the assessments. Here's what they make up. Here are the payments. This is what you still owe or don't owe.
Well, Kyle, the last meeting that we had, or when we were scheduling this, you were saying we needed several hours to go through stuff for, for DD four. I guess what the, that's, that's where I'm, maybe I was getting at is where, even if it was outside the meeting, where would a guy start for, for accomplishing that information?
You would start with the basics, with the.
For to come up with the same figure that you did.
Full listing of warrants that were issued when assessments were brought in and calculating everything.
But you have that. You have something that calculated that, right?
Uh, yep.
Okay, so why aren't we just saying what's on it?
I don't have that.
No, cut, no, I was telling you.
Because it depends on how you structure it of what you wanna look at, whether it's the assessment of when the assessment was made or when the warrants were actually redeemed, and that changes the information and.
Okay, well, explain that so that makes me know that.
That's a spreadsheet item.
Because Tammy, if she goes through the work of doing the, the phase two, well, if, if we think that's not being done correctly, then she would change how she does it.
Yeah, I don't wanna waste my time.
If, I mean, to me, issued or redeemed is when the, that is, what other interest schedule is there? We issued the check, that's when that, soon.
The problem is the, the issued versus redeemed doesn't line up if the assessments were short. So then everything compounds after that. So if you have a hundred thousand dollars that is, a bill is paid, whatever the date is, you have a hundred thousand dollars, it starts accruing interest from the day it's issued. Until it's assessed, it's still accruing interest. But when you send an assessment, if the original principal plus the interest would equal, say, a hundred and twenty thousand, for example, or a hundred and ten, whatever you wanna use for an example. If at the time, the tax money would typically come in or waivers get signed up for, say it's a hundred and ten. If that assessment is short, then everybody who signs up for waivers, their interest is going to calculate off the original principal balance of what they were assessed for. But then, if that's spread out over ten or twenty years or whatever the time period is, if there's no further assessments, the interest that they're paying isn't enough to keep up with the interest that's accruing in the account. So everything compounds on itself. So, that's where correlating to the assessment date is valuable because you can see the shortfalls as they happen and then see how that translates into the future. If you look at when they were actually redeemed, you have a combination of what was assessed and what was waived factoring into this. And then you throw ice on the cake of a FEMA project and funds coming from that, from an outside source that's not on your typical fall schedule. I mean, we've had three different payments that added up to about nine hundred fifty thousand. So plugging in those, when the funds come in versus an assessment time, it, it all compounds on itself.
So, let me see if I understand what you're saying. So you're saying, let's say, two thousand seventeen, that sixty nine thousand dollars, whatever it was, that wasn't added in. That, even though it might have been redeemed, it's still collecting interest because that amount wasn't assessed. So it's still collecting, that sixty nine thousand dollars is still collecting interest until the assessment in two thousand twenty four? Is that what you're saying?
Whatever, whether it's this drain or any other, wherever there's a shortfall in the assessment, until it's cleaned up with funds coming in from another assessment or FEMA or whatever else, until those, because I mean, the warrants are in essence a loan against the district, against the land in the district. The code of life will give us a structure to be able to do it, the whole nine yards. But those are loans against the land. Until those loans are paid off, they're going to accrue interest. But if you have a hundred thousand dollar bill and you only assess ninety thousand, you've got ten thousand that almost acts as a new principal balance because it wasn't assessed at the time. So it just carries on in perpetuity. And the fact that this situation wasn't fully understood until the last year-ish is also part of the equation because the time factor multiplies the situation. So.
You mean by time factor, you mean interest?
Yeah, exactly, compound interest. I mean, I'm sure, um, I am not, I'm not gonna give another example and confuse the situation, but it all compounds on itself. So if you have sixty or seventy or whatever the figure is in interest that wasn't figured in the beginning, that stacks up the whole way through.
So is that seven hundred thousand dollars all interest?
No, no.
Okay, so what is it then? That's exactly what you guys asked, what I've been asking.
And that's been answered. But that's the interest from the past projects, okay? That's the outstanding balance, the principal balance, and it's the, and it, and it's excluding the FEMA dollars. And that, that was with the three parts.
So let's, let's focus on the newer, most recent FEMA project on its own. The three hundred thousand initial assessment was not figuring interest either. That was just a target of fifteen percent of a two million dollar project. So, that isn't gonna correlate to an invoice. The seven hundred thousand isn't gonna correlate to an invoice because it's a target. I guess, I don't know, but maybe there's a better term out there to classify that. But that target of seven hundred thousand encompasses interest that was missed in seventeen, eighteen, the succeeding interest from that, interest and interest from the FEMA project that wasn't included initially and any other smaller repairs. But that's balanced plus, that's balanced out by the dollar figures that are still collecting on waivers. And it's also kind of balanced by the expectation of the FEMA funds that are supposed to come in yet or expected to come in yet. And the appeal that we've talked about was obviously not information that was known or available at the time of this assessment. But I still believe that money will come in. It's just a matter of when. Um, there's thirty thousand-ish for, that was obligated for three DIs that were never completed and those were not in my district, and that money will not come in. I'm confident in that. But we didn't pay any bills associated for those either, so it's not an issue. But the money that was spent, I believe very confidently, we provided ample documentation to FEMA all along. If you want Leon to speak to any of that, he can chime in at any point. But, um, that engineer's report was provided to FEMA in September of two thousand twenty. So they've had it in their hands almost five years now. So whether we could've had a better understanding of their process or what they were looking for or not is, is all hindsight twenty twenty. But, um, I feel fairly confident that the dollars from FEMA will come in. It's just a matter of getting through the process and answering their questions and getting that solved, but.
So Carter, you said the seven hundred thousand has already been covered. So, Carter, you said the seven hundred thousand has already been covered, what it is, it's interest, the balance forward, and what else?
I said excluding the FEMA dollars.
And the waivers that were coming in.
And, correct.
I mean, it's it's on the twenty-four assessment of a hundred and seventeen waivers.
So, what are you showing as interest then? I know you said it's different than what Tammy came up with, what are what are you showing as interest? What are you showing as the balance? Because those two combined, then hopefully make up seven hundred thousand?
Well, it won't make up exactly seven hundred, but it will be close to that figure.
Yeah, I know he said rounded, it's whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
So, from the from the time I had talked about this during the meeting, which it's actu- it's, part of it is different than Tammy's sheet, because mine are figured by calendar years for when things were paid. Went back to twenty fifteen, where there was accumulated warrants of twenty-one thousand, six hundred ninety-two and forty-seven cents, so a little over twenty thousand, there's an assessment of twenty-two, six, seventy-five, so that's within dollars or whatever, I don't have any concerns at that point. But then seventeen accumulated amount for warrants that would have been issued, I have is one point two million, and some change, and then working interest of that is eighty, almost eighty-five thousand. But then in twenty eighteen, I have five hundred and five thousand, so there, between the two phases, there would have been some stuff that was actually paid in twenty seventeen. So, that would explain a little bit of the difference, and my total numbers versus Tammy's total numbers are within about ten thousand. So, there very easily could have been a couple other smaller repair jobs on the same district that would be in the list that I have. But in twenty seventeen, I have a difference in the assessment of the assessment versus what was issued of three hundred and forty-four thousand, and then in eighteen, there's a negative difference of a hundred and eighty-four. So, running difference at the end of the eighteen assessment, I have is a hundred and sixty thousand. Then, in twenty twenty, that would translate to two hundred and twenty-four thousand, and then then we get into the twenty twenty-three assessment, the twenty-four assessment, and the dollars that have come from FEMA, so at twenty twenty, before any substantial construction had been accomplished, I have just shy of a quarter million dollars of a running difference based on the assessments and based on status dates. But that's only a couple pieces of the equation. And that's why it's so complicated, and I've I don't know.
No, we've got about a half hour left here.
And if we don't finish assessments today?
We're in a special session, probably Thursday, I don't know. I mean, we can't do it tomorrow with twenty-four hour notice anymore.
I can't anyway. I'm scheduled tomorrow from six AM to five thirty PM, so you tell me when I'm gonna come in then. And same with Thursday.
Friday, I don't know.
And we didn't get very far today.
No.
Uh, no. These need to probably be ran when, I mean, I know they usually get ran the end of June, but.
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't know how we're gonna get through them, because and the spreadsheet is really nice, but yet, at the same time, if we don't know the original, then we'd get far on twelve, 'cause we didn't know for sure, and we know we figured out eight thousand dollars. And we're gonna run into that with every single one.
I mean, in all reality, it's not that way across the entire spreadsheet, I mean, I don't remember which one it was that you had said earlier that had a positive balance, nothing was needed, I mean, maybe we make a list of the ones that need further attention or come back to, I I don't know, but they're not all like twelve, and they're not all like four. Sixty sub one I use as an example, that doesn't need any more assessments, it's right on track, right where it needs to be. DD, um, seventy-five is right where it needs to be as well. That's gonna have a positive balance, by the time all the waivers come in, it's on track, like those are a couple major improvement projects that have happened in the last couple of years, and we don't need to discuss them for an hour at each, um, so maybe that's the plan of attack, is get through the easy ones and narrow our scope down to focus on a handful, I don't know. But it's it's not the whole list that is the same one.
We we could do that, and then the ones that we need to come back to, myself, or any anyone else on the board here can sit down with Tammy and get some information and figure some stuff out before the meeting too, so that way we at least can move through things.
Okay.
Do we wanna put a note by twelve that we need to break that out, however the project was, and then keep moving from there?
We'll do that. We had questions on two as well.
Two and four.
Two, two, four, and twelve so far.
Okay, then we need to go.
So, sixteen looks like the next one.
Yep.
Which has a couple waivers and about seventy-five hundred not needed, so I would say that probably needs an assessment of seventy-five, eight thousand, I don't know. Our interest is calculated to December first, so.
Okay.
Depends on how tight we wanna run that, I mean, you could always round up five to the nearest five hundred, nearest thousand, whatever.
Yep.
That's all right.
Well, that one has a negative sum balance of four seventy-four in there, so.
But that's incorporated in the subtotal.
Does it?
Formula's happening all filled in.
So, I wanna go to like seventy-eight? Just around it close?
I mean, if you're gonna round it, I would at least go to the eight thousand, but that's still pretty small. Plus, I don't know.
I would say eight.
All right, but DD twenty. Main three, open ditch.
Looks like that just has a couple hundred there, so I don't know, that was an outer assessment.
That's right to me. Drain twenty, that's all USA ground here.
And actually, for the drain twenty, main three, open ditch, we could double check to make sure there's not something that was assessed for that, 'cause there's thirty-seven thousand waivers for
That's drain twenty or drain two?
That's drain two, main three, you need?
Yep, I, yep. I was offline, so never mind. There is those waivers from the, um, USA ground that we probably should get rid of, but that doesn't need to be a today project.
Okay.
So, leave those all at zero, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay. Twenty-three. Around the right line here?
Yeah.
Yeah, twenty-three.
I'd say five hundred or a thousand.
Did we skip over two?
That doesn't matter.
Two, it was, yeah, it's just got the waivers.
Okay, sorry.
Twenty-three, yeah, put a, what, five hundred to night?
For that one, it's probably not, I mean.
Put five, put five hundred to that. Thirty-three, original main.
Thirty-three, original main would have, um, the waivers for the new main, the north and west one, those waivers would all tie together, I believe, because I think that was a project, I don't double check the location there. Even if we combine those other waivers, it still has a amount needed of about thirteen thousand, so I think that'd be one to double check, but I think we probably need an assessment of about thirteen, thirteen, fourteen, but it might need to be split up across those other schedules. Any other thoughts, have I agreed, disagree?
I don't understand, you got a separate account, how you combining things, I don't understand why. I mean, I don't think you would just be assessing, I I, and if possible, I just don't understand, so.
That goes back to what I was trying to explain before with the original fund and the classification schedule, it would have been replaced by a new schedule when they did reclassification, and then the bills were originally written from the old account, so.
You can you can just reach out and take money from a new account to pay an old account?
It's transfers, and that's what we've talked about a couple times, we've had them presented to the boards, and we can see where those funds are being transferred to cover those projects, but it's just the mechanics behind it, I don't I don't know how to explain it any shorter than.
Well, I I made a note of thirty-three, check into that one with the others.
So, there was work done in this thirty-three in the past twelve months?
Probably not.
So, how would this get by last year without being assessed?
Well, let's look at that assessment sheet.
Didn't get by last year.
Thirty-three, it shows that it was collecting on remaining balance and oh, there was there was assessments last year on that one, um, and it said there's still some on waiver before. But that question would apply to DD twelve or whatever that we talked about before too.
Sure would.
So, yeah, I, yeah. I was under the understanding that we had caught all these things last year, and it appears that that was not the case.
So, we can go back and find out where these charges came from? We can, we can produce?
If you dig through the records far enough, yeah.
How far is far enough?
Whenever the project was, I mean, that other project was twenty sixteen. I don't know when that one was, or what's happened since then off the top of my head.
That's just south of the Titanic, isn't it? Could be three. It gets on the south side of town.
Actually, yeah, it is, so there may have been some work done in that district recently. I don't know if Roger told you about anything that was ongoing in there? I'm not sure, but it is right on the south side of Titanic. So, and they they would have had an assessment last year too.
The only thing that was ongoing was what we discussed at the beginning, and I had to talk to landowners and
That tree project?
Yeah, that was the only thing I knew of that was ongoing, or not completed.
Yeah, and that would have been in seventy-eight. Geographically, they're close, but yeah, different district. So, that'd be one to check on. Thirty-nine, the next one?
Yep, thirty-nine, main two.
Which is, what are the waivers?
Yep. Okay, forty.
Forty does not have any waivers, it looks like that needs a assessment of six or sixty-five hundred.
So, I was gonna say sixty-five?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
So, I'm in, so I'm in, we're talking about forty, right?
DD forty, yep.
So, I'm in forty, and I get an assessment, and I say, what's this for, you're gonna be able to tell me?
Yeah, yeah.
Hold your voices, but yeah.
No. I've got a question, and we look at stuff like that, yeah. All right, DD forty-two. Looks like it needs a three.
Yeah.
Fifty one, nothing, fifty one, let's see.
Fifty one, lot A.
Lot A one, ninety two.
Looks like that needs. Five hundred or a thousand.
So it's okay to collect more than what you have bills for?
Yeah, you can have a positive cash balance, it's, actually, there's.
And if you don't, if you do five hundred, you shook it, you show twenty three dollars, somebody's, the interest is collecting again?
Yeah, but you're dealing with twenty three dollars.
Just go clean it up.
Well.
Well, that's just it, yeah.
Let's not talk about five hundred or a thousand, let's clean it up.
Yeah, so a thousand in there?
Yep.
You can't literally assess five twenty three?
Uh, well, I mean.
Yeah, you can.
You, you can get it as tight as you want, but.
Okay, whatever.
I think we should be consistent of what we're doing.
I agree, absolutely.
Are we rounding to the nearest hundred, or are we rounding to the nearest thousand?
Five hundred, five hundred.
Cause here we did four hundred and thirty one, and we said five hundred, here is five twenty three, and we said a thousand. We were not really being consistent.
I think the only ones that, um, I've looked at the next five hundred, which, like, the one for DD forty. You know. That had an amount needed of six thousand twenty nine dollars, we went to sixty five.
Yeah, but up here, with the one that's compared to, for twenty three, it's four hundred and thirty one dollars, and we said five hundred. Unless I went down wrong.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be the next five hundred.
Near five hundred. You just go five hundred.
So it's always gonna be the nearest five hundred, is that what we're consistent with? I mean, whatever, as long as we're consistent, I don't care.
I think that's a reasonable target, I don't know. I mean, we could go to the next thousand, but I think we.
I, I think it is too, because then as soon as you get a, you know, a repair request or something in there, then you got a little money in the, in the account to. To go towards that too, so it's not like it's just sitting there, but.
So, and yeah, if we agree to go into the next closest five hundred, that'll make it simple.
Uh, then we got sixty. Which. Let's see, sixty playing here. Trying to follow.
We might need to double check if that's the open ditch, or if that's an open sub one, I mean. We're looking at twelve hundred there, so fifteen hundred dollar assessment, potentially, but. I think we can just confirm that that's not from, that those invoices are not from that project, and if that's the case.
Well, it's the same fund number, five one one three nine, and sub one.
Actually.
Yep.
Yeah, so, so then it should be. Well, I don't know why the outstanding numbers are different then. Well, that's a line that was in, was not in green, so it probably.
That's the previous one, and then the new one.
I would believe the next line is probably accurate.
So nothing on the, right, DD sixty then?
No, sixty sub one is good.
But DD six?
Those are the same funds, that's the same fund, if you look down.
So go off of sub one, and it's, it's fine?
Yeah, 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 it's good.
We eliminating the previous line, is that what you're, cause they're the same.
I probably would, yeah.
They're the exact same fund there, which, the one, the one that's gonna be newer.
We can maybe, maybe note that we can double check that, but.
But we need, we need to check on that, yeah.
So not a function of adding them together, it's a function of you just use the one.
Well, yeah, and it's a function of that line and the information that's in there was presented to us a couple weeks ago.
Okay, so the rest of sub one is good. Uh.
Sorry.
DD sixty sub three does not need anything, that just has waivers.
Yeah.
Sixty sub four, that is the big project that we just talked about.
Yep.
Um, and had our completion hearing for.
Right.
We were trying to get some numbers prepared for that, but that did not get, um. Finalized and put together by today, so, um. When I talked with Tyler, he thought we'd be closer to the three million by the time we adjusted those damages and stuff. But his initial reclassification report that was presented to everyone was based on two point nine million, so. By the time we pay the ten percent retainage, which was a couple hundred thousand minus reductions. I think we'll be pretty close to the three million dollar figure that's needed, so. I guess I can try and get a lot better fine tuned answer on that going forward, but I think that's about where we're gonna need to be.
Three million?
Yeah, three million.
Okay.
Sixty.
Sixty one.
Five hundred bucks.
Yep. Sixty nine.
Sixty, sixty seven, um.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to forget that, sixty seven, that's an I district.
Sixty nine.
FEMA funds coming in, are those in, or are they?
That would have been a line that was plugged in previously, so, I mean.
Double check it?
We can double check it, it could be up to the discretion if we wanna assess it now and have a credit there when the funds come in, or if we wait and see.
Is it, well, I mean, what would be assessed, a thousand for that one, and then, once the funds come in?
Oh. No, it'd probably be four thousand would be the subtotal, and then minus the funds expected would bring it to seven seven.
Oh, I see, cause that's already subtract, yeah, that's already subtracting FEMA funds.
So either a forty five hundred or a thousand dollar assessment, depending on. Dis- discretion.
That FEMA would have been for. I think for, um. The east one for, the small, smaller one for Dave over in there.
Okay.
Yeah, so. I'd, I'd probably just as soon do five hundred on it, and. Well, well, yeah, we're getting FEMA funds are coming in here soon.
If that's one of your projects, yeah, you should.
Yeah, so, so I don't know that I.
But you'd still be.
We're still gonna be seven, 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 three short.
Do the thousand dollar assessment.
We better do a thousand then, yep, yep, you're right. I wasn't thinking about that. Okay.
So a thousand?
Yep. Then we can go to sixty nine.
So we got sixty nine, and we got sixty nine in main tile.
Yeah.
So sixty nine is just a, shows a waiver, but.
So that one is one we probably need to double check and find when the project was, and, um. Get some more information on that, but it looks like we're gonna be short thirty three thousand. So. I'm, I would say double check, but probably gonna be in that thirty, thirty three ballpark.
Yep. We got four minutes till Tammy wants to go, or needs to go, um.
So my three thirty was postponed till tomorrow, so I have to hold up ten to four, you wanna keep working?
Oh, let's keep going.
Let's hammer as hard as we can then.
Okay.
Um, the next one is for seventy five, which is in good shape.
Wait, wait, I, yeah.
You skipped seventy two, seventy two, and we need five hundred.
Yeah, five hundred.
So do we gloss over sixty nine, lap nine eighteen, and lap fourteen?
Yeah, I missed those.
Actually, yeah, those have amounts needed.
Well, so I was about to say the same.
Yeah, I was like, I missed those two.
Well, they're all in the same district, so we probably need to find out what was done on there.
Okay.
Figure it out, yeah.
That's another one on the list too.
Okay.
Uh, seventy five, is that where we're at?
That's where we're going by.
Yeah, okay.
So you're gonna look, check into sixty nine?
Yes.
Sixty nine, all, all along.
Seventy two is, I don't know, this is.
Five hundred.
Five hundred, seventy five.
That's one that we don't know the. For.
Oh.
But that's, it, yeah, it doesn't matter, it'd still be.
Yeah, that's.
The amount is still the same, it's not gonna change anything, so it's still gonna be, yeah, that's good.
That sounds good. Yeah. Um. Next three of waivers.
Seventy, um, seventy six needs twenty dollars and fifty one cents. So five hundred, I suppose.
Do we need that much?
That's what you decided, to be consistent.
That's fine, that's fine. Okay, seventy eight.
Seventy eight is good.
That's good. Okay, let's see, lap six on seventy eight though. We need a fifteen hundred?
Yeah.
Okay. Number an eighty.
Eighty, open ditch A, looks like twenty five and a half.
No, that one is not filled in, that one's yellow.
That is just.
That's based on your units, yep. The, for units in the computer.
You still have a dollar amount out there.
So you're okay with going with the outstanding, okay, yeah, cause the outstanding and that's supposed to match?
Yep.
Twenty five five?
Once the units are plugged in, it'll be the same. Open ditch.
Now, is this one we need to look into as well?
I think those have separate schedules, we can double check, but I'm pretty sure eighty was.
Okay, yep.
Well, we have the list of all the ones that are reclassified.
Right.
I don't know if that's, maybe on our computer somewhere or not, but I would say this, eighty's all separate, I'm pretty sure.
So for open ditch B four?
Four thousand.
Then one.
Thousand for lap two.
Lap thirty, we're good, fifty five, we need fifteen hundred. Eighty, we need.
Eighty, we need to look back at that project, but that's not gonna be a small one.
Again, is that something that happened in the past year?
No, it's not.
This something that's just floated along for several years?
Yes.
I'm gonna get that back, I'm sorry, who paid, who, county paid the bill? Who wrote the Chevy, who, who covered the bill?
It's a stamped warrant.
It's a stamped warrant, so it's a loan against the land of the district until it's paid. So.
So if we do that one, are we going to, two fifty five?
Yeah, that's five hundred.
Fifty five, which lateral is that?
Um.
Eighty.
Lot A.
No, this year will be cleaned up.
Lot eighty one will be fifty nine.
If you look at last year's assessment for lateral payday. Transferred to this fund from fifty one, five one six eight one, five one six eight two, five one, yeah, so it's.
Well, and that's one that'll probably need to be split out by other laterals from the original project, so that'll be the same as that other D twelve or whatever.
Uh, okay, we're on to eighty two then, and five five. Eighty.
Where are you at?
Eighty two, what we just did.
What do we have for lot eighty one?
Oh, lot eighty one, fifty nine?
Fifty nine. Eighty two, fifty, ninety five five.
Eighty three, twenty one?
Uh, we have a whole line there.
Thirty thirty three?
Twenty six.
Yep.
Lap fourteen, eighty, fifteen hundred.
Nine. Thirty six.
Eighty four, oh, here, let me get you a total.
That's my bigger one.
That needs about forty seven, forty six, nine nine three, with those.
Yep, with the.
Nice three.
So forty seven thousand?
Forty seven thousand.
Yeah, but that'll need to be split out by those other schedules.
Okay, then we are at eighty five. Sixteen five. Eighty six, two.
Two.
Eighty eight is fine.
Yep, okay.
Yep.
Ninety, good. Ninety lap one.
Twenty.
No, no, eighty five.
No, we're eighteen five. Ninety lap twenty, or thirty two five.
Yeah.
Ninety lap forty.
Five hundred.
Five hundred. Ninety lap, what is that, sixty six?
Thousand.
Thousand. Lap eighty eight, nothing, one eighteen, five hundred.
Five hundred.
DD ninety nine, nothing, one oh five, thirty five hundred, no, 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 that's it, that's.
But that's.
Change my money.
Still would be short thirty five.
Oh, yeah, we would, okay.
So, yeah, thirty five.
So, still thirty five. That money, that money will come in soon too, let's see, then, one oh eight.
Twenty five.
Twenty five. One ten, one eighty three five.
Yeah, but we got one sixty.
But there's got waivers.
Well, that one's got a hundred and sixty two waivers, so.
Comes up to twenty five, one nine, so we need.
Twenty, twenty five five?
Twenty one.
Or twenty, oh, yeah, yeah, okay, twenty one thousand.
And that'll probably need to be on the, I think the south main would be the new schedule, but we can double check that.
One fourteen, fifty seven five.
Yeah.
Fifty seven.
One sixteen.
Fifty five.
Fifty five. One twenty one is five hundred. One twenty nine is fifty two five.
That one, we do have that, um, project in the works with Minnesota and stuff, so.
Yep.
Um, we can do the assessment, but typically we haven't until the project's completed, but, I mean. I don't have any. I don't have any opposition with doing an assessment now, cause some of those have stacked up over time.
Let's clean it up.
Yeah.
Get rid of that.
Fifty-two-five, I mean.
Yeah, fifty-two-five was, that was said.
Three thousand for one thirty.
One thirty is three, one thirty-two can be eighty-five hundred. One thirty-three is twenty-one, five hundred. Let's see, sub one is good. Lap fifty-five, fifteen hundred. Lap twenty-eight, nothing, one fifty-one, fifteen hundred. And then one fifty-six is one thousand. Page two, that's.
Don't you have the lap fifty-five?
Um, one fifty-five, no.
Lap.
Oh, lap fifty-five.
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred.
Okay. You're good. Okay, on to page three, one fifty-nine. That's a.
That does have female money going, um, still probably twenty-five hundred.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, twenty-five hundred for one fifty-nine, one fifty-seven, good, one sixty-five, five hundred. One sixty-five lap four, thirty-five hundred.
Um.
No?
Yes, that was one that was a tr- private trustee drain that got turned over to us.
Okay.
Um, so, yeah.
Are these next ones are privates? One sixty-six.
Yep.
What about it?
They have private trustees, so we're not responsible for them.
Which, and which one is that?
That's one sixty-six, that's around the Sway City area.
One sixty-six.
It says private on the website.
Yes.
Yep.
Yep.
So we don't assess those?
No.
Unless they ask us to.
Well, we send out the assessments for the function of the tax bills and all that, but we don't make the decisions.
Right. So are we?
We process the payment.
We're going through them here?
No.
No, no, we're not, cause they ju- yeah.
We just randomly assume.
One, yeah, one seventy-nine, the five thousand.
Yep.
You skipped one sixty-nine.
There's nothing there.
Oh, okay. Didn't say it, so I didn't.
That's okay.
For those joint drains, we already did that resolution.
Yeah, that's done.
We did, so. Okay. That's the back, oh, that's good, good.
The last rest of them.
Well, we've got homework.
Okay, so when do you want to meet again?
I'm feeling like Friday.
Unless we gotta decide, then we just go through them?
I mean, there's.
We just, we just gotta figure out a few of the drains here.
Okay, that's.
So.
DD two, DD four. Those ones we still have to.
How long is it gonna take to figure them out, you think?
What do you mean?
As far as what we can, are questions on, on those few drains?
Well, you're gonna have to tell me what you need, because I don't know what you're looking for.
As far as the, what was.
What's sched- what's the schedule works or something?
Or what could be, is grouped together, transferred, or, um.
Well, we print it off from what is showing that's old, right?
What's on a new schedule?
Yeah.
What's split out?
I mean, we skipped several in DD four, just because they're in DD four, but like. DD four, lap twenty-eight, there was a repair project there, that's got waivers out, it doesn't need anything, so I mean, I think some of those we can go through. DD four.
Let's go through what could, at least look at the ones that we don't need to.
Yeah, DD four, lap eleven, has an active project that we've had a couple of public hearings on now, so, I mean.
So what, so do assess it, seven.
I would, I would hold off on that one till we get that project done, because we're actively in the middle of it. So when we, if we do an improvement project and we send stuff out and people have the options to waive it.
Yeah.
This might not be enough that they would even hit the threshold, so that one I would hold off on. Um, like DD four, lap eleven, open ditch, that should, that should probably get a thousand dollar assessment.
Okay, there you go.
Lap twenty-four, probably needs fifteen hundred. Lap twenty-eight is good, lap thirty-one A needs a thousand. Lap thirty-two, five hundred. Lap thirty-three. Needs thirty-five.
Lap thirty-seven W.
Eleven.
Eleven thousand.
Yep.
Lap forty, need, huh?
Hundred sixty-two thousand.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's the other engineer project, they're in the middle of construction, I wouldn't do an assessment there till we're done with that. That'll be a next year one.
We should, yeah, next.
So like, in the, in the titles.
Go more, some of those, if they're not finished, yeah, we should.
Well, it just should say improvement in progress, and that type category wasn't filled in yet.
Fifty-three, four.
Yeah, four thousand.
Sixty is good.
Sixty-three, mm, fifteen.
Twelve C, minus twelve.
Which one's good?
Lap seventeen is good, seventy-nine, needs four.
Get this back to where we were there.
Lateral three.
That's good.
What about sub ten there?
Where are you at?
Sub ten?
Oh, he's up.
Oh, you're going back up?
I went back up.
Yep, so.
Be forty-five?
Forty, yeah.
Yep.
And then.
Then that gets us up to.
Lap four.
Four, which, I'm gonna try and grab those other figures. If you count the waivers for six, six A, six B, which would have been part of that project, um, still short twenty-four, two-seventy-five, so. Twenty-four and a half, I think.
Which one?
DD four.
Lap four.
Lap four.
But it probably needs to be split out among the other laterals too.
But a total amount to assess, you said twenty-five?
Twenty-four, five hundred.
Lap two, I mean, is that seventy, seventy-two thousand?
Looks like it.
Twenty-two-five.
Probably a favorite, yeah.
And.
I think that's all the simple ones.
Yep. Do we need DD five?
Oh, we thought it was five.
Yeah, there we did.
Yeah, we didn't need anything.
No. Okay.
So what was, only ones that we have left?
We got questions on two.
Was it twelve?
Twelve, thirty-three, sixty-nine. Eighty. I've got a question on eighty, lap eighty.
Yeah.
Yeah, I said thirty-three, yep. And then eighty-four, need to split that out.
Yep.
DD four, lap four, need to split that out. One, one to make sure one-ten is on the new schedule. That's what I got. Okay. I wonder if somewhere there.
Progress.
Yeah.
Um, when do we wanna come back and just finalize it? Friday, Monday? Well, it gotta be done on July first, mon- Tuesday's July first, isn't it?
Yep.
It'd be Monday at eleven forty-five anyway.
Probably, yeah.
Is Monday a good day, you know?
Well, I can come at the one forty-five, but then I have people from one until four-thirty.
Can you come before eleven forty-five?
I have somebody before that, but I can see if I can maybe switch a couple of people around, do you wanna come in in the morning on Monday? I mean, I could probably switch that around, so then it's, if, if that's okay with you guys, if that's enough.
You'd rather be Friday, you'd like to see that?
I, I mean, I, Monday works better for me, but that time is one person, so.
You gotta get it done on Monday, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we'll be done Monday.
We cancel, what time when we have to start Monday?
Cause they get tummy enough time to.
That's all the time we got.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't have a choice, yeah, we don't have a choice.
That's it, yeah, that's it. We have to finish and be done, so that they can do what they gotta do, because they still have quite the.
Yep.
I have an appointment at, or have a thing, another meeting at nine, so could we do ten, nine-thirty or ten, how much time do we need? Wouldn't think we'd need that much time.
I don't know that we would either.
No.
If we, if we're all on the same page that we're gonna round to the next five hundred, and we.
And we've got all that, yeah.
Figure out a couple of these projects and districts, I mean, I don't know that there's that much more.
Editing numbers and.
I don't know, eleven would probably be fine.
Yeah.
Do that, yeah.
Monday at eleven o'clock?
Eleven.
Okay.
And I can see if who I have, eleven can come maybe a little bit earlier, I can start earlier in my morning or something.
Thank you.
Better than Wednesday or Thursday or Friday. I'm still playing catch-up, someone always gone, pull this week for that.
Okay. Well, we'll finish her up then. And. We are not.
Tuesday, right?
What's that?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll do the handbook first on Tuesday, so we're not gonna do anything with that. Um, do auditor and board discussion and.
Okay.
Call those.
Next week is July first already. Um, so we have the continued hearing for DD four, seven-nine, lap eleven at ten o'clock, some handwritten claims. Looks like a final payout for sixty-seven-four. And that's it so far. Um. So, next week on the thirtieth is Ron's last day, and our new maintenance meeting starts on the thirtieth. Um, we're in the process of, um, doing interviews for a drainage clerk. Um, so we hope to get that position filled as quickly as we possibly can. Um. Yeah, this has been busy. Very busy trying to play catch-up, so, um. I was supposed to be gone to auditor school this week, unfortunately I canceled because of everything going on, I just can't be away, so.
Okay.
Um, so I will be here all week. And I think that's all I have.
Okay, is it a busy meeting next week or no?
I said it already.
Oh, yeah, I, yeah, I just, but I didn't know if we had a lot other than that, or, okay.
Friday at eleven?
No, Monday.
Monday, Monday at eleven, yep. Anything, Howard, board discussion?
I'd like to look at department head meeting. I have my blank, I know there are some things said that I was interested in, but I'm blank.
I can't remember.
Been interesting today.
I, I can't remember either, so I can't even help it.
There was, there was interesting things talked about, I, I just don't, like Derek hashed over the same things he's done last week and this week. I, I don't know, I don't have anything else, I was at, I just, I just went to a economic development meeting.
I had early childhood yesterday, and we didn't have the financial meeting first, we just had the board meeting and. Just basically talked about the things that we had talked about in the meeting before and the financial part of it and moving stuff around, we basically went through the motions of approving those changes and. Um, some other things, but, and everybody gave their reports and that was it.
Okay, Kyle.
Um, I have C A D C on Friday for our full mission meeting, and we have an executive committee meeting on Wednesday. So, got those coming up.
Tomorrow.
In a week. Tomorrow.
Josh?
I had no meetings.
Okay.
I did hop on the FEMA call last Wednesday, we've got another one this, or tomorrow, Wednesday at twelve-thirty. And dollars should, um, well, Kyle, were you able to get into?
No, when you said that, I, I was gonna talk with you after I made it, so we can get that signed here.
Okay. Okay, so, um, we've gotten things transferred over for authorization. Status and such, and, and so Kyle just needs to sign document, um, to approve the category Z, and then. Um, FEMA will schedule a meeting with the state to hand money over, and we should, should have money for my district's FEMA projects. In the relatively near future here, so, that's a good thing, um, would be good to have that wrapped up, so. Other than that. Uh, I've, yeah, got care connections meeting coming up next Monday, that'll be our last meeting as a governing board officially. We'll have, like I said last time, we'll have a couple meetings yet to close out stuff after the new fiscal year, but. Care connections will be officially dissolved in a week, so. That's that. Um, and finally. I got something I need to read here, and. So. Uh, to the residents of Cassuth County, especially those constituents of mine who live within the first district, which I'm a representative of. Four years ago, when I decided to run for office, I could not have predicted all the changes and, and good ones at that, which have occurred for my family over said time. And maybe that's just part of being twenty-six years old and the unpredictable nature of life at my age, but regardless, um. Having graduated from college, having rapidly growing business, starting to farm, most importantly, having a growing family. Has placed different opportunities and priorities in front of my wife and I than we had four years ago. This being said, this is my announcement that I, I'm not going to seek reelection in twenty-twenty-six. And it is, it is not in mine or my family's best interest to do so at this time, just ask my wife. It has truly been an honor to serve on this board, and I appreciate so very much the support I've received from Cassuth County. It has truly been an honor to serve on this board, and I appreciate so very much the support I've received from Cassuth County. I don't believe in coasting to the end of anything, so I'll still be an active voice in the board until that time, but. I wanted the people of Cassuth County to know my intentions, and therefore have greater time and ability to find a quality candidate to fill the position. Again, thank you Cassuth County, and I look forward to continuing to serve in the remaining year and a half of my term. Sincerely, Carter Naff, First District, Cassuth County Supervisor. Got some things I don't think I'm gonna be able to commit another four years, wife stuff happening and, uh, good things in the works, but, uh.
It's all right.
It's, it's good to have plenty of notice and people need to know, so.
Yeah, thanks for telling us, thank you.
No, no, so.
Thanks for sharing.
No, but I'm here a while, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I'll be checking out.
Yep, yep, so.
Good, okay.
With that, motion adjourned.
So moved.
Motion by Garmin.
I'll second.
Second by Walter. Any discussion, Howard wants to argue it?
No.
Howard wants out here.
Uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye.